Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming tonight on behalf of the Belmont Redwood Shores PTA Council and the RSCA. We welcome you tonight. I am Michelle Storbar, PTA Council President, and we are so glad that you are here with us tonight. Thank you for taking time with your family, your busy schedule, to come and support our seventh candidate for the school board. Just a few announcements. The restrooms are right out here to the left. We have water and cookies for you, and thank you for coming. I'd like to introduce our moderator tonight, Jim Hartnett. He is a Pennsylator University Law graduate, Navy veteran, founding partner in a law firm, long and distinguished record of public service in Sammentail County, former mayor and city council member. He chaired the Redwood City-Sammentail County Chamber of Commerce, and he currently is a member of the California High-Speed Rail Authority, appointed to this position by the California State Senate. So please help me welcome Jim Hartnett, our moderator, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. What a great crowd. I've used to be in a candidate's forum where it's principally the family members of the candidates, so this is great to have such a really nice turnout. And I'd like to thank the PTA and RSCA for organizing this really important forum. Two Redwood City Council members asked me to give their greetings, Vice Mayor Jeff G. and Councilmember Roseanne Faust would have liked to be here, but there's a city council meeting tonight, so they have to be there. As you know, tonight is not a debate. It's a presentation by each of the candidates with an opportunity for them to introduce themselves to you and for you to hear them respond to some preset questions that have not been shared with them, and also for you to have an opportunity to ask questions in writing. There's forms available for you to fill out if you have a question. There will be an attempt to answer a number of the questions. It's best if you can direct a question to all of the candidates. To the extent there's not enough time to answer the questions, if you have your email address on the form, people will attempt to answer the questions via email. There will also be time at the conclusion of the formal presentations to discuss issues one-on-one with each of the candidates, so please don't hesitate to do that. They're all anxious to talk with you and to share with you their ideas and to hear from you, which is also why they're here. This is an important election. These people have each put themselves out to share themselves with you and the community, and I always admire people who put themselves out to run for office. It's not an easy thing to do. It is not just time-consuming, but it can be very stressful. And they went elect to represent a large and diverse community that is very important to all of us, so I want to thank each one of you for putting yourselves out there to work with and to hopefully the school community. As we go through the evening, you'll see that there's a randomness to it. The seating order was randomly selected based upon how people arrived. There's a random order for opening statements. There will be opening statements, there will be questions, and there will be closing statements. Before people give their formal remarks, I would like, just starting from the far right to the left, for each person just to say your name as you would like your name to be And the first thing that we'll learn is how well you work together is there's one microphone you have to share.
Okay, I can never hear you. So my name is actually Naomi Ishimoto, but I think that people have hard times saying it, so Naomi is fine. Thank you.
Kelly Redden.
Rakesh Hegde.
Chuck Welskow.
Amy Koo.
And I know I have the hardest name on this panel, Suarna Khobali.
Herb Newton.
Thank you all. First test was passed. That was pretty good. Remember now there's these forms, so please don't hesitate to fill one out and pass it in. They have volunteers in the back, so if you'd like to ask a question, please do so. If you do address a question that's specific to one candidate, that question probably won't be asked in general, but the candidate will have the opportunity to directly correspond with you by email. The opening statements will be by each candidate in a random order, up to three minutes. We ask that the candidates be direct and brief as possible, taking no more than the time allocated, but there will be a timer for you who will raise up a card when there's 30 seconds left. There it is, yellow in the back. And when you see the red card, finish your sentence, and then you'll be done for that presentation. When the questions are asked, you will each have an opportunity to answer the questions in the random order that's been drawn, and you will have up to two minutes. You will likewise be timed to give it a 30-second notice and then the red card. I'm sure that no one will need a red card tonight, but it's available as needed. So we will start with the opening comments, and here it says the random order that we have. Is it the list here that I have? I have a sheet with numbers. So the intros will be... There's no names on the sheet, though.
One, seven, is going across.
One, seven is going across. So the intros is for... Did we start one on that end?
Yes.
Okay. Well, actually, we're starting with the number five. One, two, three, four, five. Would that be Amy?
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming to the candidate forum. My name is Amy Koo, and I wanted to introduce myself. I'm a mother of two sons, aged five and two, and I've been involved in the district for quite some time. I've lived here for 10 years, both in Belmont as well as Redwood Shores. And back in 2009 timeframe was when I first got involved in district happening, and I was involved in a language immersion effort where we wanted to get an immersion program approved in Belmont Redwood Shores School District. And that year, one of the key things that was highlighted as a reason to not start the program was not because of lack of interest, but it was really a funding issue. So because of that, I went and joined School For Us so I could find out more about how the district was funded and what could I do to help. So I held a garage sale fundraiser and reached out to businesses that year. It was the inaugural year of the I'm In campaign in 2010, and I really met a lot of good people and started to understand what made this district tick in terms of funds. The following year, I had my second child, so I kind of disappeared for a while, but I did get contacted regarding language immersion again as part of the alternatives committee. So I did go to a few board meetings while six months pregnant to talk about language immersion as a potential alternative to alleviate overcrowding in Central and Central area. And this past year, my own son was impacted as he was entering kindergarten with the over enrollment and overcrowding issues. And this time, it was related to Redwood Shores, and my son was assigned to Nesbit. And through that process, I interacted with school board members, district staff, as well as other parents, and started really understanding a lot of the key issues that are facing the district right now. I'm very happy that the superintendent is selected and got a leader whose focus on communication and transparency, because that's one of the key things I'm concerned about. Part of the reason why families were upset with the school assignment is not anything related to the school assignment. It was really more the lack of communication and transparency about how things transpired. So that's one of my key priorities. Secondly, I feel that it's very important to have neighborhood schools and preserve that even though we're facing increasing enrollment. And lastly, I want to make sure that the district's resources are used in the best manner possible. Are we spending our tax dollars efficiently? So that's what I stand for, and I look forward to talking to you.
Thank you very much. John, your next.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. It wasn't expected to be a crowd, so we appreciate the interest. Two and a half years ago, I was appointed to the school board, and it was through an interview process, and I would have to say that at the time, I did not completely understand what being on the school board meant. I mean, I've been a teacher for 18 years and teach at Woodside High School and a great program called the Business Technology Academy, but I don't think anybody really understands what you're doing on the school board until you're kind of there and you're in that seat, so to speak. So the last two and a half years have been a little bit of a learning experience, but I think the one thing I've tried to stay true to is to bring the educator's perspective to the school board. I mean, that's what I am. I'm a teacher in the classroom every day, and that's really the perspective that I want to have. It's been an interesting experience. I tell people oftentimes, it's not necessarily enjoyable or satisfying in some degrees, because if you're working with kids every day and you see that type of event actually taking place, you know, a school board meeting is going to be a little bit contentious, and you're going to have to make some tough decisions. But I feel like there's been a real good learning curve here. I've taken some time to go to the California School Board Association and finish up my Master's in Governance, so I'm putting that before you, so I think it's going to be a positive element and bring a little bit of experience onto the school board. I'm also extremely excited, and probably the main reason that I really would look forward to another four years is working with Dr. Milliken. We spent hours with Dr. Milliken, interviewing him, going through the process, and I really feel, at the end, we had three great candidates, but this was a guy who was going to be great for our district. So I really like the opportunity to serve another four years. We have some challenges ahead, but we're fortunate. We have a great school district. We have a great community. Staff is outstanding, and no matter what the challenges are, be it financial, Common Core, LCFF, we're going to be able to tackle it together as we.
Thank you. Ashley, it's to your right, Rakesh.
My name is Rakesh Hegde, and I've lived in the district since 2006. I'm a parent with two kids, a sixth grader at Charleston who also attended Nesbit and Sandro, and a second grader. I live in the Shores. My wife and I work in the Shores. We've been part of this community since 2006, so it's been interesting. I've been involved with the school district for a while now. I've put in hundreds of hours of volunteer hours for the school. Everything from I've been a docent in art in action, I've worked for various events, Save the Music, Mardi Gras, Green Power. In fact, I led a team, the first Destination Imagination Team from Redwood Shores, which went on to win regionals for two consecutive years. I've also served with School Force Gold. I was part of the team that raised that record-breaking $2 million last year. Pretty proud of that. At School Force, I was pretty involved at expanding the partnership, the business partnerships, trying to do more on the business side, because I felt that the parents were already over the packs, and we need to expand our relationships with businesses. At School Force, I also worked at figuring out efficiency. Was responsible for migration to Salesforce, trying to break in more process so that we can increase productivity at School Force. Professionally, I'm a software engineer, been an entrepreneur, built multiple companies from scratch. In my job, debt of, debt and worth of being a CEO in my company, I've worked on multimillion dollar budgets, worked with large teams. Interestingly, you know, also had to play the consensus builder among the team and try to resolve issues. With all of these, you know, I have, I basically ran for School Board because, you know, I've been involved for a while, and I felt that I had the skills to come in and move things forward. I think, like Chuck and Amy said, you know, there are CS issues with our district, be it Common Core transition, you know, the capacity issue. Funding is always the root cause of everything else. In my mind, I think I can provide leadership in these. I can provide the skills required to do the job for School Board, so that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, Rakesh. Now, please. This is all brought to you by Random.org.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your time this evening. I'm running for School Board because I know and understand the current school district issues of having attendees, leading for the past two and a half years. And also having two children and a nephew in the school district, I have a vested interest in success of the schools, of all the schools, and the cities at search. You know, mainly, I want to let people who typically don't attend school board meetings that you do have a voice, and that at times, it can be a frustrating and intimidating process, but you do have a voice, and I want to make sure that your voice is heard. My three goals in being a school board member is that, one, is that we want to build better communication with better, I'm sorry, better communication, building a stronger community, meaning that in the past, we've heard issues that were partially given, and not all of the community members were informed about these issues. Number two, we want to provide quality professional development training for our education with 21st Century Learning and Common Core here. It's important that our educators have meaningful training in order to provide quality education for our children. And third, we want to thoughtfully develop a plan and vision for the future of the district that puts consideration for all of our stakeholders and not just the children, not just the families with children. And basically, a school board is a business, but this business, it deals with children, so we have to have certain sensitivity when we deal with issues with children. But at the same time, we have to give the respect to our educators, to staff, and to the parents when we deal with these issues. So that's why I'm running for School Board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kelly, thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Kelly Redden, and up to this point, I've primarily been involved in this community as a local high school teacher. I teach up at Callan High School and have been there, starting my 13th year up there, so eventually, children may end up with me, because I don't plan on going anywhere. So up to this point, that's what I've been primarily doing for this community, is teaching the high school kids. I teach English 10th grade, but I've taught juniors, seniors, and ninth graders as well. I've been on the local site council for the high school, the government's council, been involved with the union there as well, and I know that I wanted to get more involved. I currently have an elementary kid at Central, she's in 3rd grade. I have a two and a, three and a half-year-old that'll be there shortly, and I just know that I wanted to get more involved. I love working at the high school. Again, I don't plan on going anywhere, but I also know that all of your children eventually come to me at the high school, and I have the, or I guess we have the ability to sort of foresee what's coming down the line through our elementary school districts. One is a capacity issue, which at the high school level, we know is coming, so we're already strategizing what to do with all these children when they eventually get to us. So we're already at the high school level making plans, and I sort of want to be that liaison that connects the local high school to the local elementary schools. I think I have a unique perspective in that way, and I'm able to sort of be involved from elementary's perspective all the way up to the high school, and so that's primarily why I'm running. I just wanted to find another way to get involved with my own daughter's education, and I felt like this was a good fit for me as a high school teacher. I'm not able to go to all the PTA meetings or volunteer in the classroom, because I'm already working in my own classroom, but I thought that this would be about where I would be able to fit in and learn my expertise.
Thank you. All the way down is Herb, please.
Good evening. I want to start off by thanking the PTA and the RSCA for setting this up. Just want to thank you both for coming out tonight. I don't think there's a better way for any of us to invest our time. You know, there's so much to love about our school district, and one person said it's the jewel in the peninsula, starting with education goals of our children. But at the same time, the district has come through a very, very tough financial episode. Things were squeezed, changes were made, accommodations made. It's been tough. I think that's starting to get a little bit better, but nonetheless, we're emerging at a very fragile time, but at the same time, there are external forces acting on the district. One of them is Common Core curriculum, which completely inferts the way education is being delivered. It changes not only how children are being educated, but how they're going to be tested, how schools and districts will be evaluated. And if that isn't enough, the funding from the state of California is also changing, almost completely changed, from 25 separate categories of spending that are very nearly defined by the state to five, requiring the district to decide with the help of the voters how best to spend that money. And November 5th, if you haven't heard, there's an election, as many as three of the five board trustees will be brand new by November 6th. Sorry, Joe. So the impact to the board is profound. As a physician, as a Fortune 500 executive, and now as a trusted advisor to global healthcare companies, these situations are the ones I deal with every day. If you know anything about developing medications for humans, you know that it's fraught with uncertainty. There are tremendous budgetary pressures, and at the same time, you have to keep the team together, you have to keep everyone focused on the goal, and you always, always have to deliver on your commitments. That is precisely what's needed on the board trustees on November 6th. I get asked a lot, why are you running? In fact, tonight, I got asked three separate times. A very wise man, I know, once told me that when it comes to public service, everybody can do something, but not everybody can do the same thing. This is my summary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least. First, I want to say thank you to everyone who is attending tonight, taking time out of their schedules. I want to thank the RSCA and the PTA Council at Nesbit Elementary for hosting us tonight. Thank you to Jim Hartnett for serving as our moderator. As a voter, you must be sitting there asking yourself, why vote for her? It's a good question. And I could sit here and tell you about my leadership positions and what I've done, but you could look at it online and find out that information very easily. I'd rather spend the time that we have, the limited time that we have, to tell you what I actually believe. Why vote for me? Vote for me because together, we can transform this district. 20 years ago in college, I read a book that was transformational for me. It was called Leadership by James MacGregor Burns. Burns wrote about different types of leaders. He wrote about Machiavellian dictators, managers who lacked vision, and then he turned to transformational leaders, leaders who by their own action and leadership transformed followers into leaders. I aspire to be a transformational leader, and I believe that this is the kind of leadership that is needed in our school district. Because frankly, five people who sit in the district office can make policy, but it requires the leadership of all of us to make our district successful. I believe that through hard work, unity, and collaboration, we can transform our already great school district into one that's beyond compare. I believe that we can continue to improve our API scores while implementing the Common Core standards. I believe that we can ensure that each child in our district, whether she's an English language learner or integrated into the GATE program, can receive a high-quality education. I believe that together, we can find solutions to our issues of skyrocketing enrollment growth and capacity. Now, I don't have all the answers. I freely admit that, but I am the kind of person who is willing to listen, and I will listen to people who even disagree with me, because I think that as important as the result is at the end of the day, the process by which we arrive at that result is just as important. And I believe that we need to have an inclusive process to involve all of the interested parties. So I ask you today to please support me to make the lasting change for our children.
Thank you all very much. That was great around by you for the candidates. We're now going to get on to our two preset questions that have not been shared in advance, but as we do that, remember, we have the question forms, volunteers in the back. If anybody wants a form that's had a break your hand to get it to you. The audience questions are going to be shorted, and so as to eliminate redundant ones, and they'll be brought up only after we're done with the preset questions. As with the presentations, we have Random.org to thank for the order in which I'll be asking the two questions that are preset. And first, I wanted to, again, thank you all for running. My direct and indirect involvement with the district started in the 1990s, when I was first involved in the discussions as to whether or not there should be a school in Redwood Shores. Things have changed a little bit since then, and as your comments have indicated in terms of how you feel about the district. So Herb, you're going to be the first one up on this preset question, and each of you get the same question, and I will repeat it each time, so you have it in mind. So first is Herb. What do you see as the single greatest challenge facing the school district, and how does your personal or professional experience make you qualified to help meet that challenge? You have up to two minutes. You'll be timed as you can.
I should give my intro all over again, but I'll try to find a way to say it. The largest single challenge...
Wait, the new question.
Yep. The largest single challenge facing the district is money, is funding. How do we pay for the services we need to deliver, and how do we optimize the revenue we have to make sure we're delivering the right services? I mentioned in the intro that things are looking up. Physically, for the district, they are. They're not out of the woods yet, but this is the inflection point. This is where policy needs to be set, decisions have to be made, how do we spend our resources, how do we focus the resources? I know you hear a lot about 21st century education. It becomes kind of a passing phrase people kick around, but in my former role, I traveled the world on business, and when you go to foreign countries and you look how people are training their children in other countries, you realize that if our children are to compete on a global platform for the jobs of the 21st century, they need a much firmer combination in science, technology, engineering, math. They need a better way to integrate that, and right now, we've got a perfect opportunity. We've got the Common Core curriculum coming out, which changes everything, which allows us to leverage the new curriculum. We have to retrain on how our teachers deliver, but also how we're testing. The fact remains that in my background, drug development, as a physician, as an executive, focused always, when you begin to bring a drug out to market, you don't know what the science is going to show. You adapt to what the data is, you always keep your eye on the goal, and you make sure that the end result, in this case, the best possible education for our children, is first and foremost, and you deliver on the promise.
Thank you. Next up is Rakesh. And the single greatest challenge and what in your experience makes you qualified to help meet that challenge?
So like, you know, like what Herb just said, I think, and I want to answer this in two parts. I think the single biggest problem that any good school district faces is to maintain the quality of education. And to me, you know, that's our highest goal, and everything else, Common Core transition, you know, funding problem, are all symptoms of trying to keep the quality of education high. In my mind, I feel, you know, funding is a big issue. It's a complex issue, and unlike what Herb's... And unlike what Herb said, I don't think, you know, we are doing as well as we think we are. We are deficit spending. I'm worried that if we continue to deficit spend, we will no longer be solvent, which is why we see Mezzaro and we see all these, you know, school force in full year. I think the issue of making sure that districts like ours are solvent is, you know, is a big issue. I also think Common Core transition is a big issue. While it's great, while we think we will be on par with other states and the quality of education will be better, the transition to the Common Core is extremely important, how we adopt. Today, one of the issues that I've seen with my sixth grader is, you know, you see things that are being implemented right now are still in flux. We still don't know how Common Core is going to be implemented. My opinion is also, but basically that's it. I think the quality of education is what is driving our school district.
Thank you. Next up is Amy. Single greatest challenge and in your experience, what from your experience makes you qualified to help meet that challenge?
Hi. It is important, the number one goal is to ensure that the quality of our education is as good as it can be and customized to each child. But I think right now, the most critical thing that the district is facing is really a question of enrollment versus the available capacity in our schools. And it's not just at the elementary school level. It's also at the middle school level, where eventually we're going to see 1,400 to 1,500 students go through Ralston, and that's just a scary number. Now, how I bring a different viewpoint is that I have the professional expertise to balance supply and demand. So basically, if supply is the number of seats available and demand is the number of students, my whole career as a supply chain manager has been focused around that, balancing the supply and demand. And I improve business processes and try to do more with less, and increase job satisfaction and happiness as a result. Now, part of that business process improvement process itself is gathering the voice of the customer. So really understanding all the stakeholders that are impacted by a certain decision and go into the solution brainstorming session, knowing what people want and don't want. And that way, when we go through all the different alternatives, you already know that we agree to disagree. And if we choose a certain path, then we need to be prepared with how we're going to implement, how we're going to communicate to people, and be able to support the execution of any decision throughout its different steps. So I think that's the unique perspective that I add, and I think I'd have, I would love your support.
Thank you. Next is Subarna.
So I actually think there isn't one single issue that's our biggest challenge. I actually think that there are three main issues. And the first one is rebuilding trust in our community. The second one is successfully implementing our Common Core standards. And the third would be, as other candidates have talked about, our enrollment growth and capacity issues. The school assignment issue, I think everyone is aware, has unfortunately divided parts of our community. And I think that there has to be a rebuilding of trust in our school board. That can only be achieved by actively listening to all interested voices, considering all the reasonable alternatives, and then arriving at a decision that's in the best interest of the district as a whole. You heard talk about the Common Core curriculum. That is going to be a major challenge, the second challenge I mentioned. This is going to be a fundamental difference in the way that our kids are taught, but I differ with Herb. I think it's actually going to be a very positive change. And I think that this is going to be more real-world understanding and learning. This will be more project-based. It'll be collaborative. And kids will not be learning a mile wide and an inch deep. In fact, they're going to be learning subjects, a fewer amount of subjects, but at a very deep level, very deep amount of understanding. Rather than taking multiple choice tests, they're going to be taking tests on a computer. So our kids are going to have to know how to use 21st century technology. The idea is that our kids should be prepared for college, career, and beyond. And I think finally, enrollment growth and capacity, that goes with the school assignment issue. And I would say in terms of my own background, I'm an attorney by profession. Communication and problem solving is my forte. So I think that I would be an asset to the school board.
Thank you. Naomi?
So my single greatest challenge is retaining and bringing in qualified teachers. With 21st century learning and Common Core, I think it's really important that we start bringing in qualified teachers and training the teachers we have, because we have excellent teachers in this district. As far as enrollment and funding, just like the economy, it goes up and down. We have no control of that. But one thing we do have control over is, you know, making sure the teachers and the staff we have qualified educators, and that we retain those educators, because it's really hard. Once you lose a good educator or a staff person, it's really hard to replace. And why am I qualified for that? Because in my department, as a landscape architect and manager of my department, I hire my staff, and it's, you know, the staff is the backbone of your company. So yeah, to me, the most important thing is to retain and bring in qualified educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
So I think one of the greatest challenges that the board is going to face in the next few years is trying to see beyond the challenges of the funding and remember what's important. Funding, I think, is always going to be an issue until our country values teachers and education the way that it should be valued. It's always going to be underrated and understaffed, and I just don't see an end to that at this juncture. So what's, I think, going to be difficult is to try to not focus so much on funding and the budget that we lose sight of what our community needs and what our children need and what our teachers are saying they need, and to find that balance. I think that's already a challenge going forward. And I think it's important that we hear from all stakeholders. Teachers are really good about making sure that they communicate their needs through their community, how representative representation. Parents have a PTA, and they can speak up there. But what about everybody else in our community that, you know, pay the property taxes for our schools, but may not feel like they have a voice? So I think it's really important to also make sure everyone is really involved, their businesses are involved in our children's education. I'm thrilled about Common Core. I am so incredibly excited because I think what it's going to do for our children is fantastic. I do not think it's going to rock everybody's world and as far as teachers go as much as I think other people here think. It just means that as teachers, we are finally going to be able to teach as deep as we want to. And I'm excited. I'm already excited. I'm in charge of some of the professional involvement for our district to make Common Core. And it's very exciting what at the high school, we're already able to do in a matter of time. Come talk to me about Common Core. I'd love to talk to you all about it.
Thank you. Herb, you probably figured it out now. It's your turn. Herb?
Oh, Herb, did I? Sorry, Herb. I got it again.
You did a great job. Chuck, I'm sorry. It's your turn.
I agree. The district has some tremendous challenges ahead. There's no doubt. I mean, from financial, Common Core, everything is true. But the one thing, the greatest challenge we have is that we're not going to solve those problems if we don't stay together as a community. And I think this is what Sir Wrenan was alluding to, is that we can do anything in Belmont Redwood Shores if we stick together. In 2008, I walked out, my wife's, she says, there's a parcel tax meeting up at the school. I go, oh God, you're going to go to this thing, you know? They'll never support a parcel tax in Belmont Redwood Shores. You know, there was a lot of anti-tax under at the time. So I said, well, I'll go to the meeting. Well, I came back as co-chair of the campaign, and I was like, what have I gotten myself into? I was inspired by Alan Sarver, and he said, you don't have to know anything. You just have to be able to work with people and direct them and listen to the consultants. So I took it upon myself, and I was introduced to a tremendous group of people who were completely dedicated. And I would say their support of the school district was not conditional. It was, you know, they believed in public education. It wasn't just for their kid. It was for everybody. And I think as long as we have that mentality, that there are not, you know, conditions on which we're going to support the school district, we're going to do it because it's good for all of us, we'll conquer all these.
Thank you. So that concludes the first preset question. We have the second one. And remind you, if anybody else has some audience questions, please turn them in or raise your hand if you need a form. And again, we have the random order, and the first person this time will be very randomly. Subarna, you probably would like the question. Again, same question to each person. What do you see as the primary role of a board trustee in relation to the district superintendent and staff? What do you see as the primary role of a board trustee in relation to the district superintendent and staff?
So I think this is an issue that when you run for the school board, you have to have a very definite view of how and what your role should be. In my opinion, the role of a school board trustee is to set the policy for the district, to work with the superintendent, to work with the staff, but then have a hands-off approach. We set the policy, and then the superintendent, the staff, the principals, the teachers, all need to implement that policy. I don't believe that board members should be involved in the implementation.
Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. So I think the role of a board of trustee is first and foremost to represent the community and not necessarily the community of just where your kid goes to, because it's bigger than that. And as a board member, you represent all communities, all Belmont and Redwood Shores, and the small pocket that we get. So I think that's one of the most important things, is that as a member, that you are listening to everyone in the community. And if you're not getting that information from the community, that you're seeking that help, that you are making sure to be a true representative of the entire district. And then also, I think it's important as a board member to listen to recommendations. I've seen, I think, on my end of the perspective, sometimes boards making policy without really consulting teachers who are implementing then policies or programs. So I think it's really important that as a board member, you are listening to everyone and before making any decisions, that you make sure to hear feedback from everybody and to not necessarily understand something, but to really take the time to make sure all voices and all stakeholders are there and represented before moving forward.
Thank you. Next up is Herb.
My preferred management style is what's been described as servant leadership. It's a way of leading by seeing to it that those you are leading have what they need, both from an intellectual, financial, but even an emotional perspective, that they can then do what they need to do. In a former role, I had employees living in 12 different countries, and every time someone... I couldn't talk to every one of them every day. Heck, I didn't talk to some of them for every week. But it was important that we knew each other, and we knew what our goals were. We knew where we had to go, and we maintained a constant line of communication so that if my phone rang at 3:00 in the morning because there was a problem in Singapore, it was an important phone call. I took it and we had it. That level of servant leadership is exactly what I think is required, particularly when the superintendent of our district is a sterling individual that we have. I think he can do miraculous things, but everybody needs advisors. Everybody needs guidance from time to time, and everybody needs support. And that's what I think for our board trustees is meant to do.
Thank you. Rakesh?
So my opinion is the school board member's job is to create an environment which empowers the superintendent to provide leadership. Like any other, if you see in the corporate world, you know, Dr. Milliken is the CEO of our school district, and it's his vision that gets implemented. As a school board member, it then becomes our job to make sure that now that we have gotten this stellar resource in our district, we need to ensure that we don't frustrate him and he leaves. Our job becomes to create an environment that lets him win, lets him succeed, you know? So I want to make sure that we do not create an environment for failure. I do not want to see, you know, that we don't set him up for failure. So the job of school board member is to make sure that bringing in smart people to run the district, that's step one. We started towards that, and then taking a step back and making sure that we are creating an environment for them to succeed. Other than that, I think the role of a school board member is a consensus builder. We have to make sure that all voices are heard. We have to make sure that every child is provided for. Quality education doesn't say quality education for few, it says quality education for all. While we would love to have GATE programs, we also have to solve problems for kids with diabetes and kids, you know, with special needs. All of those problems have to be handled. So therefore, I think, you know, as a board member, it's our job to provide that policy guidance and then let the experts do their job.
Thank you. Chuck?
I think for this, I like to use, I enjoy gardening, and I like to use the garden analogy in that the school board should be reflecting what the community really wants in that garden. And we're going to Dr. Milliken, and we're saying, hey, this is what the community wants. And we're working with him, saying, is this attainable? What do you think? What's your opinion on this? And as a governance team, you come together with this common vision, and that's something that we agree to. Now, it's also his job to say, you know, you want a little color in that corner, but if you want that color in the corner, you're going to have to give something else of, you know? Those are the expertise, the expertise that he really needs to bring, and to tell us what we can and what we can't have. Or if we want that, then it's our job as a board to go out to the community, explain what we need and what the support is that we're going to be from everyone in this room in Belmont Redwood Shores. So in terms of an actual relationship, technically, the only employee that works for the school board is the superintendent. And we are the evaluator of him, or her, and we're the one who hired him. So that's the only person who's really accountable to us. So from that standpoint, it's very important that you're working together cohesively, that you are having that common vision, and you're doing everything you can to support him, and that that vision is reflective of what the community wants.
Thank you. Amy?
I feel the role of a board member in relationship to the superintendent and staff is that of a good partner and trusted advisor. The superintendent has only so much time on his hands, and the staff are focused on teaching kids in schools. So, you know, really, as a board member, we are the people who can be out there in the community. We can have an open door policy. And I think the key thing for the board member is to realize that all opinions are valid opinions, all questions are valid questions, and really have that open door policy. And certain people may not want to go to board meetings. They may not want to go straight to the superintendent to complain or whatever. But they might be a friend of ours, and someone may come to me and say, hey, you know, I think this is going on. Can you do a little research on it? So I think part of the board member's role too is to do that kind of independent research and talk to people who may have knowledge in a certain area. Like I recently went out and spoke with the superintendent of San Mateo Kloster City School District, because like our district, they have an issue with two cities and one vision as a school district. And I wanted to understand the dynamics, what were they doing? So things like that that kind of go outside the norm is really what I'm looking at. So being that person that people feel free to go to, whether or not they're a parent... So being that person that people feel free to go to, whether or not they're parents, non-parents, or staff members, and then really taking that time to do due diligence as well as doing my own independent research so I can really add different perspectives to any decisions that need to be made.
Thank you. Naomi.
Aside from being a policy leader, what we really are, what the board members are, is a liaison to the community members. We are the ears, the voices, the shoulder and it's, it's important to connect with the community. But, but mainly, what, what happens is if we don't engage the community with any of the issues, that there may be communication problems. So again, we, we become, we are the, the link between the community and the school.
Thank you all for your answers, the direct answers to those preset questions. We now have some from the audience and we're probably going to go with these questions, depending on how briefly you answer the questions. You have up to two minutes per question. You can take the full time or, or not as you see fit. But we get as many questions in as we can until about eight twenty or so. We want to maybe eight thirty depending. We want to make sure you have time for your closing comments if you want to talk one on with the folks. This first audience question is going to be addressed to Kelly and then we'll go again, random order. Now, this question is, is really two-in-one, so you can, you can answer it as you see fit, combining, combining them both. So, but since they're related, I'm asking it as, as if it's one. How do you plan to contain costs and deliver quality education? And how will you deal with any unfunded liability of the district such as retirement funds? So have you planned to contain costs and deliver a quality education? And how will you deal with any unfunded liability of the district such as retirement funds?
Excellent question. Even from asking it. That's a tough one. I think it, well, first of all, I don't have a direct and clear answer for that. The, the way funding is going to come down is changing. And we don't quite know what that's going to look like going forward. It's definitely going to involve more community members, which kind of excites me because when it comes to figuring out the bigger picture, that's where some expertise, people from the community can, can learn their expertise. Funding retirement, I mean, again, this is a kind of bigger issue of in our state level and nationally as well. But I think, again, it comes down to making sure first and foremost, who are our clients? Our clients are our kids. The first priority is are they getting what they need? And I think the second priority is are the teachers getting what they need in order to do their job? And if that means making sure that they stick around in our district to be the absolute educators, if they are, then we need to look at that. Everything else, I think, comes secondary and how we map that out, I think, is going to be the job of, of the board and of this new funding that's going to improve more community input than we've ever had before, which is exciting in many ways. I think it's also going to be challenging as well.
Thank you. Chuck.
So I just had the fortune of attending a local control funding formula informational meeting on Wednesday. And the one thing that was kind of clear is that local control funding formula is not necessarily going to change our status where we're at right now unless we continue to have lower R per pupil spending, in which case then we would actually pick us up. The one hope I do have is that there is a possibility that if we go to 24 to one in grades K through three, which right now we're at 25 to one, we could get a $700 grant per student, which would be helpful. I'm holding, I actually asked Dr. Milliken and Naomi about that today, so hopefully that will be the case. But I honestly can't promise that. I think the biggest thing that we're going to have to do is first of all, get past measure R. I mean, that's, we, we have a three-year commitment to the county to show that we're going to be solvent, so we absolutely have to pass measure R. We have to continue to support school force. Beyond that, we're going to be looking at some tough decisions down the road if our enrollment continues to grow. As you guys know, right, our revenue has basically been flat and at the same time, we have growing enrollment. Now, last year, we spent about a million dollars less than we anticipated. If that trend continues, that would be a good thing, trying to get maybe some cost under control. And that can be varied from anywhere from special education to a myriad of ways. So we're going to have to look at those things holistically. It's not going to be one person's decision, whatever we're going to do in a couple of years, whether it's going out for another parcel, whether it's going to be having to raise class size, whether it's going to be, the, the decision we make will be made in a transparent fashion and we're going to do it as a community, so.
Thank you. Subarna.
So as I said in, in my opening comments, I think having a high-quality education for all of our students is the priority. And our district, as I understand it, has a budget of about $35 million per year. Eighty-five percent of that goes, either directly or indirectly, goes specifically to educating our kids. And only three to four percent of our budget actually goes to administration. So I think that's, that's actually a very good start. Now, everyone here, I think, understands this, that school board members have a fiduciary duty to do long-term planning. Chuck kind of alluded to this, that the district actually does planning for three years down the road and forecasts. And while the law requires a reserve of three percent, our district actually wisely maintains a seven percent reserve. I think that's a good thing. But at this point, when the district looks down the road, we can't count on the $2 million that we have been getting from the parcels. There are two parcels that will be expiring in the near future. And as Chuck alluded to, that's why it's so important that we have to pass measure R. That's a 10-year extension of our current parcels and it does not raise taxes. And frankly, if measure R does not pass, in three years, our district will not be solvent. What that means, if we are no longer solvent, is that the state will take over and then the state will be able to cut any programs. And we won't be talking about gate or anything like that. They will cut at base level. So I think no one here wants that scenario, so I would really urge you to inform yourselves about measure R and ensure that that gets passed.
Thank you. Naomi.
So what I could bring to the board with this issue we're facing is that, again, I said I'm a landscape architect. What, what I mean a landscape architect is that I have a budget that usually is the first one to get cut out. And I also have to work with a budget that has been decreased, but it's the first thing that, that the public seeks, the landscape. So I have to work with something that is minimal, yet make it look pretty and, and nice for everyone to, to, to receive. So my skills, what I bring, is difficult situations. I deal with difficult situations every day. And whatever that may be, I am able to come up with creative solutions and make sure that all of the parties are looked at before making any final decision. So again, it's being able to come up with creative solutions with what we have.
Thank you. Amy.
Now, I, I don't think I can really answer the retirement funds question, but I assure you, I will research more about that and figure out what options there are. But I can talk to containing costs while maintaining quality education. Now, I think it's important that, you know, funding is uncertain, but the key thing is there are two levers that we control. Either we increase the funds or we decrease the cost of providing services. In this case, teaching our kids and supporting the staff and families in that process. So one of the, some of the ideas that I've thought about is really going and looking at some kind of survey or audit. What's common in, in the corporate world is really doing that kind of pulse survey to understand across all the, the people involved in the district, what's working, what's not working, where are there areas of improvement that we could look at? And usually while improving processes, we end up being able to cut out inefficiencies and do more things with the same amount of money. One of the things I've looked at is, for example, technology that's out there that is, could potentially enable us in how we communicate to everyone. Does it have to always be paper-based? Maybe not. How do we do enrollment, registration, things like that? Are there better ways of doing it? Also, special ed, are there support services that could potentially be improved? I actually spoke with a high school friend of mine who is an account rep for an ed tech company and she was saying that she had actually tried to drop off informational materials at VRSSD and no one had called her back. So I think those types of opportunities where we can do more with less are the things that we can do as a district.
Thank you. Worka.
So again, I think, you know, Chuck and Subarna have, have set a few points about the budget. When you look at, at the budget, you know, with increasing capacity, with increasing enrollments, the revenue is still the same, is still a basic aid. And as Chuck said, you know, LCFF, with everything that we are, we are seeing, it's unlikely that we're going to become a revenue limit pretty soon. We're spending around $8,300 to $8,500 per kid. And if you look at the costs, again, eighty-five, eighty-seven percent is spent on classroom. And in my opinion, if you actually drill down into the details and look at it, you know, average teacher salary is 70K, with benefits, it's 90K. Living in the Bay Area, you know, with that kind of salary he pays, yeah, so it's, we are already at the bare minimum of what we are, what we are spending. I also found out that a lot of our, our teachers opt out of, of benefits. I don't know the exact percentage. You know, a lot of principals average at 100, 110K with no benefits, stuff like that. It's, you know, these costs are, if, if you're trying to cut corners, you know, it's not going, it's, it's going to have a direct impact to the quality of education. The past history of not having a superintendent, while we said it was cost-saving, truly not having a leader running our district is not cost-saving. It's actually hurting the quality of our education. So in my opinion, you know, measure R, while I think we can't stop at measure R, we may, you know, we will continue to deficit spend, we're projecting three years in advance. You know, we are continuing to deficit spend. We will, at some point in time, you know, hit that reserve. If we continue to hit that reserve, we will not be solvent. If we don't, you know, if we hit that, we're not solvent, you know, we, as, as Subarna said, the statement take over, that's a, you know, a dire situation for me. So, you know, I think we need to, sorry, your hand.
Per.
I'm going to try to answer this question directly and stay away from a little bit of theory. I don't think we can constrain costs any further than we have. As I said, the district has come through some very, very lean times and has done a remarkable job. In fact, if you plot out our teachers' annual salary over the last 10 years, it has been flat through 2011 with a three percent uptick in 2012, which is the last data that's available to me. Teachers have done their part. They tightened their belts and they delivered. Test course data, our kids got educated. I don't think there's any room for tightening in there. Which means the levers we have is we redirect spending where we can. We focus on priorities that may need to be addressed and we work on maximizing the revenue. We work on spending smarter. We do the exact same things that we all do in our own households when times are tough. You know, additional children moving into the district gets cast as kind of a negative when in fact, it's much like getting a child of your family. A child's a blessing, but it takes planning. And we haven't done the planning and we need to do the planning. No one's mentioned unfunded liabilities like pensions. If you heard my opening comment, you always, always deliver on your commitments. We need to accrue, we need to budget for the unfunded liabilities. If those pension benefits are untenable, if they're unaffordable, then we need a change of going forward in an open and transparent way. I can't give you a better answer because the last audited financials that are available on the website are from 2011. The district doesn't put these financial projections out there, so I can't give you numbers. But I can tell you is you don't balance a budget by turning your backs on the people who got you through the tough times.
Thank you. We're going to do one more question before the closing statements. And I'd ask if you could keep your answers to this one to no more than a minute and a half instead of the normal two minutes. And you may be able to do it in less time. Up to you, depending on how you wish to, to answer. And the random draw of the first person this time will be Naomi. And the question for all of you is this. Do you expect the student population to, to continue to grow significantly in the next two to 10 years? And if so, how do you think the district should handle the growth? You expect the student population to, to continue to grow significantly in the next two to 10 years? And if so, how do you think the district should handle the growth?
Do I think it's going to continue to grow? Yes. Well, there may issue in elementary school areas, not as much as in middle school. How am I going to provide solutions for that? This is tough because I don't have the answer for that. But I think this is a, this is a problem that needs to be looked into as a group, for the community and put teachers and put staff and experts. So to be honest, right now, I do not have an answer for it because my answer may not be the best answer. So I think right, the best thing to do is listen to what everyone has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Per.
Do I think the enrollment will continue to grow? Gosh, I hope so. I want kids to have better public education. I am a product of larger public education. I think the exposure to diversity and, and exposure to your classmates in the sense of the neighborhood is critical. I hope it keeps growing. How are we going to pay for it? And that's a little harder. You've heard a lot about financing and budget and things and I don't have access apparently to some of the things that Chuck might. But the last published thing that's available on VR, the Belmont, Redwood Shore School District website is the unaudited budget update of March 7, 2013. And in that update, they said two things. Number one, they said that property tax revenues are surprisingly up almost $600,000, $568,000 I think it was. Property tax revenues are up. We didn't know about it. It's a wind farm. The second thing they said, March 7, 2013, is that we, the district was going to flip from a basic aid into a revenue limit, which means we would be compensated on a per, per student, per day basis. And that's exactly where we want to be and we should drive enrollment and we should make our schools so damn good that we have people lying there outside the door trying to enroll our children in our schools.
Worka.
So answer to the question, is the enrollment growing? Yes, it's going to grow. I think the, the next steps for that is to, you know, is rightly that Milliken has started an enrollment task force, which is what is, is needed, is to revise the estimate of what the enrollment growth is going to look at, to come up with solutions which, you know, options of, of solutions. I think we are in an interesting mix where we have a capacity problem. There is not enough room. You know, enrollment is only going to grow and it's not just going to grow at elementary levels. It's going to inflow into middle school. We are already at 1,200 in, in rostering. So to me, the task force is our next steps, come out with, with options that I'm looking forward for the task force to come out with, with options that make sense. The solution that I'm looking for is, has to be long-term. It cannot solve just the kindergarten problem. It has to solve the problem for fourth grade, for middle school, for elementary, all the way to, to high school.
Thank you. Amy.
So do I feel that enrollment will So do I feel that enrollment will continue to grow in two to ten years? I believe it will, because there are still a lot of homes out there that are owned by empty nesters or senior citizens that have yet to turn and be sold to new families that are moving into the district. And until that, that supply is exhausted, we're gonna continue to see enrollment growth. I think Rakesh mentioned a very important thing is the enrollment task force, so I encourage people to apply to that. The critical thing is, is to really get diversity of viewpoints and opinions on that task force, to make sure that whatever plans are put into place really meet the needs of the broader community. And I think the one thing that we wanna keep in mind is that the bubble will burst, the timing, who knows? But if we're trying to figure out solutions to handle the enrollment growth, we have to think about what happens when that enrollment goes down. So physical expansion is one thing, because we added a sixth school, but we didn't add corresponding capacity to the middle school level. But at the same time, we want that flexibility for enrollment to go up and down without having to close schools, open schools. So something has to be flexible about that picture, and no matter what the enrollment level, we can adjust as needed to what the, the actuals end up being.
Thank you. Kelly?
So, yes, enrollment is growing, it's not going anywhere. And as far as answers, again, I think we're all kind of saying a lot of the same type of things up here. We're all gonna be involved and try to figure this out together in many ways. I think it's really important that we're also keeping in mind our local high school that's also going to, that is already projecting out the enrollment that's coming. And the last thing that I wanna do is, you know, have the high school district put forward a bond at the same time that the elementary school district is putting forward a bond, and having voters have to decide which bond to support, which bond don't I. So I think it's gonna be really important that both boards are communicating with each other and figuring things out, because I think ultimately, we are gonna have to go back to the voters at some point for some additional funding. I don't think we can completely rely on the foundation, as fantastic as it is. It's a foundation, and we technically shouldn't be relying on it, right? Because it could just go away, even though we don't want it to. So we need to figure out ways to bring in money without having to rely on an outside entity, and that's gonna take a lot of collaboration.
Thank you. Subarna?
So I think currently, right now, we have about thirty-five hundred students in our school district system. There was a demographic study done in two thousand and ten, and it's on the district's website, which showed that by two thousand and seventeen, Ralston was supposed to have just over a thousand students, and I think Rakesh is correct in his, in what he said, that today, there are about twelve hundred students at Ralston. So we have had exponential growth. On this issue, and like a lot of issues, when I don't have the answer, I always talk to experts. And so I had the good fortune of speaking to John Violet, who is the current Belmont City Treasurer, and he is a past board member of Belmont Redmond Shore School District. And he told me a very different perspective of a time many decades ago, when in fact, our enrollment was going down, and we had to sell off schools in Belmont. So in answer to the question, will it continue forever? Absolutely not. There will get to a time where the enrollment will dim down. And so to me, the responsible thing to do is not to build out everywhere, but to do it in a wise way, perhaps looking at first our existing capacity. Are we using and utilizing our capacity to the best needs? And then also, maybe looking at the cost of portables if needed.
Thank you. Chuck?
So I have to disagree with a couple of things. We don't want our enrollment to continue to grow, because if we are revenue limited, the best the state of California will give us in the year two thousand and twenty is basically a per pupil spending where we are right now. So we don't wanna be seven years down the road, spending the same exact money as we are per child, and that's not gonna enable us to do what we need. The second thing is, we did expand at Ralston, we added eight classrooms last summer, so we have tried to keep up. I think what we really need to look at is, and the task force will look at this, because there's gonna be principals over there, is some creativity in terms of scheduling, staggering starts possibly at Ralston, looking at how we build maybe a house system there to make a big school a little bit smaller for children, and that's kind of similar to the program that I teach in Upwood Side, where you have collaborative teachers working together, they know their students really well, they're able to plan lessons and so forth around that. That can make a big school smaller, in terms of the actual capacity growth that we're at, and Subarna is right, because we're at, two thousand and seventeen, we're there now. I think everything has gotta be on the table, and I even beg to say a charter school, because a charter school, you're not tied to zoning restrictions like you normally are in a conventional setting. So we, we just have to look at everything, and we'll make a decision as to how we're gonna do that in conjunction with the bar for, and the task force that's gonna be coming together. But there are solutions.
Yeah, there are so many really good questions. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna challenge you, I'm gonna give you one more question before your closing statements. And instead of giving you two minutes or a minute and a half, I'm gonna see if you can put your answer to this question within about a minute. It's tough, but it did, and we may just give a flavor. Obviously, a minute's not that long, but lots of people have lots of questions, so we're trying to get as many in as possible. And again, we have our random order, and Subarna, you're gonna go first this time. And there's a preface to this question and the question. It says, "Our district is known for its special education. Many people move into the district because of these services. However, the community often feels that a disproportionate amount of money has been spent for special education. How will you address these concerns?" And we repeat it. Our district, and you can disagree with the premise if you want, it's, however, you can agree, disagree, whatever you wanna do in the response. "Our district is known for its special education. Many people move into the district because of these services. However, the community often feels that a disproportionate amount of money has been spent for special education. How will you address these concerns?" First up is Subarna.
So I think our district is known for serving the needs of all children, including those who have special needs, and I think that we should all be very proud of that, because every child is worth putting the resources and time and energy. It's important that we educate all children, as I said in my opening. I think that in terms of educating children as a whole, we have to look at the best interests of the child, and that's the legal standard that's, that's used. Do I think that there's an overemphasis on special needs kids? No, I don't. I think, as I said, every child needs to be valued, and I think that we, as a district, can be proud of what we have done in this regard.
Thank you. Naomi?
So I totally agree with you, Subarna. I think we should be proud that we are known for serving students with all levels of need, and we should disregard any aspect of it. But with that said, I think we need to make sure that every child with every need, whether it's advanced or lower than average, get the attention they need. So, again, we should be proud of what we do for our children.
Thank you. Amy?
Hello. I, I do know that the number of special needs students and cases are, are going up. Now, I don't know if that's necessarily disproportionate, but I think the key thing is really understanding what the current trends are, what types of special needs are really hitting our district. And a lot of it is communicating out to parents, non-parents, staff, as well as, you know, even city council members, right? And really sharing what is going on within the district, and being transparent about what decisions are being made and why the money is being allocated to a certain area.
Thank you. Chuck?
So the district, a couple of years, recognized that our special ed costs were, were going up, but there were some good reasons for that. We had children who were autistic, and we were responsible for them from the time they're three years old until they come and enter the school system. So there was some, there's always very good reasons when you're bringing after a child with special needs. What the district did try and do, and we were pretty successful, was last year, we hired occupational therapists, because we had a cohort of students who could be served, we believe, better in-house rather than contracted in-house. So we were able to save some money by doing some things in-house. Also, there's a very innovative program here at Nesbit, in which we're looking at K-one splits for incoming kindergartners and first graders. You might be a little bit lax in language acquisition, and rather than being diagnosed for special ed or an IEP, they can now have a greater focus on language acquisition, and that can help you, and really, most importantly, benefit the child in the long run, in addition to looking at listening and skills and so forth, testing kindergartners as they come. So I think there's things that we can do that are still gonna be in the best interest of the child.
Thank you. Wirkesh?
So I think Chuck, you know, hit all the talking points for this. So yes, I think, you know, I think the emphasis has to be that we provide quality education to all children. You know, adding to what Chuck said, Nesbit holds the first of its time that we did last year, which is a transitional kindergarten. I would have loved to see that kind of program when my kid was going through kindergarten. You know, so I think it's our duty, you know, we, we have to do the best for providing education to all kids. I would also advise everybody to, you know, if you want, you can check out information on the website of Free and Appropriate, it's called FAB, Free and Appropriate Education, awesome information that'll give you more insight on how this all works.
Thank you. Naomi?
So, yeah, I think we're kind of speaking the same thing here, and that we should be proud of this district, if we are adequately serving the needs of our special education students. And I, I think maybe communication is gonna be really important. If people are feeling like we're spending too much educating special education students, then, then there's something missing that hasn't gotten clearly communicated to our members, whether it be teachers, or parents, or community members. So that's really important, because as a school district, we're legally required to meet their needs, and if we don't meet their needs, then they have to, we have to pay for that somewhere else, as Chuck was kind of mentioning. So if we are being, if we're able to do it in-house here in our district, that's something to be commended, and maybe not everybody understands that legal requirement, that if someone comes here with a need, we have to fulfill that need, no matter if it's a special needs kid or a kid that just came from another country. So, thank you.
Thank you. Virb?
If you look at our special ed spend and our budget, and you compare it to other school districts in the Longwood Peninsula, we're actually better than most as far as the spend, so I think we're doing what we can to kind of control that spending. I used to practice a lot of critical care medicine, and there, you take the patients as they come, kinda sick, real sick, daily, if you, if you can. It's the same thing if you're an educator, you take the kids as they come, and if they need more services, you deliver more services. But I will leave you with this, the patients I remember, the ones I feel best about, were the sickest, and the kids who need the most services are the ones we, as a community, should be the proudest for and serve.
Thank you. That's all we can do on the questions. We're gonna have you take a break.